Such a nice job out there, so it's difficult to corral us all back in on time. Before we get started, I always like to read the mission statement just to remind us all of why we're here. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning, a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. I always feel like that's a perfect segue to our Avon Achievers. So tonight, we get to celebrate some Roaring Brook staff and students. So I'd like to call forth Noam Stern as well as Larry Sparks. And Jake Spivak will present certificates as well.
Thank you so much. Kick it off. I'm so honored to be here tonight to first honor Mrs. Jennifer Dufine, who is an RBS parent, a longtime RBS parent. And I'm so pleased to be here this evening to thank her for her unofficial role as kind of like our resident historian. And the reason why that's true is what I'm so appreciative of is her diligent efforts to serve as, among other things, our yearbook expert. And so what I've noticed over the years is that Jen is sort of, she's sort of like a great wedding photographer. She's always kind of in the distance whenever something grade is going on. So it will be all-school assembly, it'll be the first day of school where we're welcoming our students, it'll be the last day of school where we're celebrating the sweetness of what it means to complete another grade. And there she is, just capturing the joy on the kids' faces, or families' faces, or staff's faces. And I am so appreciative of the fact that, as a pure volunteer, she shares her eye, her art, her graphic design skills, her camera. She gives hours and hours of her time. For all those reasons, on behalf of the whole RBS family, I'm deeply honored to invite you up here to receive your Avon Achiever Award. You are a true Avon Achiever.
Thank you so much. I'm very proud to be a part of the RBS community.
You're so happy to join. Thank you very much. We've got three fantastic RBS students joining us this evening, William Dowd, Michael Nicholas, and Abby Van Hoof. And the reason why they are here is to recognize them for their roles as part of helping out our local veterans and celebrating our local veterans as part of the Roaring Brook School Veterans Day recognition ceremony. They were integral parts of this as members of student council and helped really run the whole thing from start to finish. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Sparks to talk a little bit more about that.
Great, thank you, No. Abby, why don't you come up first? Right up here. And we can turn around everybody to see how fantastic you are. So Abby came to me along with the other two. And Abby's known not just for her leadership on student council, but she's kind of widely known throughout the school for her scholarship. She's quite the wise, widely-read student and very scholarly, so we appreciate that. And when it came time to deciding who would be the first to present to the masses at our whole great gymnasium, all assembled for Veterans Day, Abby went, "I'll go first." And it was a good thing she did because the saying goes, "Even the best-laid plans of mice and men can sometimes go awry." That's it. And so the plans were going out the tubes, and I'm running around, and Abby's right at the podium, ready to start. And I'm signaling from across the room, and she handled it with great professionalism and applause. So congratulations to Abby. Thank you. And Michael Nicholas, come on up next. So when it was time for planning, Michael was the first one to step forward and said, "We ought to have a theme, and the theme needs to be to defend the flag." We had put forth the idea of the theme the prior years being the 75th anniversary of the founding of the Air Force, but Michael thought defending the flag was something we'd rally around, and we certainly did rally around that. And when he's not leading kids at student council, he's out leading the football team on the playground, he's got probably the tightest spiral on the whole RBS playground. And I think Justin for stardom at Avon High, if not for the Pittsburgh Steelers as well. So our thanks to Michael for doing a great job. And Will Dowd, could you come up next? Will is another true scholar-athlete and has got a great spiral himself quarterbacking the other team. Will had the hardest job at the assembly. We had a long list of local VFW veterans with their rank and the years they served, and what wars, and what specialties they had. And we had all the list of Roaring Brook relatives who were also in the military. And we rehearsed it, the pronunciation of, you know, multi-syllabic last letters without a vowel in them. He had it down. And then, right when everybody was assembling, another parent came over, "Oh, my Aunt Ginny came up from Virginia, and can we get her in?" And what's the name, and what's the rank? And I was running around, and Will was writing down another name, and another name, and another name. And Abby's ready to go, and Will's writing another name, and he's staying cool throughout the whole thing. He did a great job. So congratulations to Will. Thank you.
Let me first acknowledge you as a mom. It's so nice to have all the volunteers that we do give so much to our schools. So thank you for doing that for Roaring Brook. They're lucky to have you. And for Will, Michael, and Abby, I remember you that day, and I was so impressed with how cool and calm you were about it. You looked very professional, and that stuck with me. And I can remember Dr. Carnimola getting into the thick of it and tying shoes and stuff, and she was all in the midst of what was happening. But what a great, great celebration that you guys provided for our community. So thank you for that. So just one more round of applause.
Okay, two things. Number one, I just want to say that I think our students are the assembly, right? And you're representative of that. When I was at your Veterans Day ceremony, all of you told me exactly what to do. And I very much appreciate that. I knew where to go, I knew where to sit, I knew when to stand. It really is truly student-run, and I'm very proud of that and of all of you for helping us to do that. Can I ask that before you go, can someone take a picture? It's hard for me to get out. Can someone take a picture with Mr. Stern, Mr. Sparks, and our students and send it to me? Thank you. And thank you very much for bringing them, sharing them with us tonight to the parents.
Three rounds of applause for Avon Achievers. That's excellent. So we also recognize that many of you have come this evening to celebrate our Avon Achievers. So if that was your main purpose, you're welcome to head out if that's what you would wish, because I know we have some young ones here. So thank you for supporting your brothers and sisters, but you're welcome to leave if you would like. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. So next, moving on to approval of minutes. I think I'm going to follow Houston's fashion and ask if we can approve all three of them at the same. Do you have something?
No. Addison, do you have one?
She's so far away.
Does she need one? Are you good?
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. So if I have a motion to approve A, B, and C? Okay, so Houston, did you want to remove something?
I know, I just wanted to get one direction.
Oh, sure. Okay.
On page five.
Of which?
The policy. Actually, no, it's the section, Roman numeral seven, section four. It says, "Consentance, secretary by the committee chair," and two, it should be two or four. There's only one. The committees and the ladies on the courts.
What number was it, Laura, under four?
It's Roman numeral seven, under four, the last sentence, the second to the bottom line, it's sort of in the middle, right above B.
Okay.
See where I'm talking about?
Okay, okay.
And through the chair.
It says, "by the committee chair," and right now it says, "the," to the board. It should be "and," just to the board.
We'll note that. And also through the chair, I did not note this myself until I was going back through the minutes a few days ago in preparation for tonight. There's also, there's another more substantive change that needs to be made on page seven, just above Roman numeral twelve, the very last sentence. Ms. Young, see where I am? Ms. Young asked for a line item for non-certified administration, which was missing. It should be Ms. Young asked for the line item for non-affiliated members, which is missing. And that, to be clear, because I wanted to make sure that we answered that question also, that's the two-and-a-half percent placeholder that we have for all non-affiliated staff.
Is it meant to be non-affiliated members or non-affiliated administration?
No, it's non-affiliated employees.
Employees.
Some are administrators, some are not, right? It's any, it's all of our employees who do not have a union contract. That's what the question is.
So it should be non-affiliated employees?
Yes. Yes.
Any other corrections? I tried to do it speeded, it didn't work tonight.
Sorry.
No, it's totally fine. Yeah, I guess. Okay, so now with those adjustments, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for A, B, and C?
I'll move it here.
Okay, thank you, Houston. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Laura, all in favor?
All right.
unanimous. Next is our communication from the public. If there's anyone here that would like to come forward, please do. If you can come where the mic is, tell us your name for the record. I don't know, it might be too low. If you speak, it probably will pick up on you. I'm sure it'll be fine. Are you okay? He doesn't need it, it's fine.
My name is Catherine Lewis, and I wanted to communicate with the school board. I've already spoken with one member of the board, who was very receptive, as I have notified the principal of the school. On February 2nd of this year, in the fourth-period English class in Avon High School, they were introducing the thought-provoking and award-winning book, Fences. They divided, they proposed dividing the class based on race and asked the students for feedback regarding this. My son correctly stated for him that he didn't like to see people judged by the color of their skin in this way, that he found it disturbing. He was told that this was a, quote, "white attitude," and that's not acceptable. If you substitute any other group for the word "white," that teacher would be terminated. Okay? My son had the wherewithal to point out that my mother participated in the resistance in the north of, in the north of France during World War II, and she died as the result of Hitler bombing her. And so we feel very strongly that white people are not a monolith. He was then counseled that he's wrong, that he doesn't understand that that's a white attitude, and he's talking about ethnicity. And it's really disturbing to me. It's not the first time, and that's why I'm here. My other child was asked in the middle school who his parents were voting for. He said to his math teacher, "Who are you voting for?" And he was told that was inappropriate. I would implore the school board to look very closely at performance and curriculum. We are not here to teach religion, we are not here to teach politics, and we are not here to give approbation to hate speech ever. And so I ask you to accord people respect regardless of the color of their skin, their religious belief, whether they're gay or straight or trans, respect people. This was not respectful speech. Finally, I want to say I think this teacher is inexperienced, and I think they did not be, have malice. But it's still unacceptable because the power differential is enormous. And she called out my child in front of 19 people, implying that he was a racist. Not okay. Not okay. So I thank you for listening to me. It's something that I've counseled my children to bring at home when they have to tolerate this kind of speech. And it's not the first time. This is the worst time, and that's why I brought it here today. And as I said, the principal and the school board member with whom I spoke was very receptive, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Catherine. I'd like to invite anyone else that wanted to offer public comment. Thank you for coming, Catherine. Moving forward, we do have a presentation this evening with Michael Requins and Todd Dyer who would like to come forward to discuss the school program studies.
First off, thank you very much for the opportunity. I do want to introduce Todd Dyer. We have the, this will not be a, Todd comes to us, he started in November, he comes to us with 24 years of high school council experience, the last 14 of which was at Chicago Valley High School, where he was the director of school counseling. He is highly regarded within the school council community. He was leading the team, led his running league school council for Hill, for the state of Connecticut. And just about a month ago, presented it to the State Department of Education for their review and their feedback. He's been a great asset in terms of helping me through my fifth year of high school, first as a junior grader. And it's a pleasure to introduce him, have him on the team with us today. Also, I do want to thank the Board of Education because, again, the opportunity that you offered me last August, but also, more importantly, what we're here to talk about today is the resources that you provide so we can offer the courses that we do at the grade and level so all students are challenged, as you do, as well as the resources. The central office is very helpful in terms of fine-tuning the course studies for us and making sure that it was appropriate and meets the needs of our mission statement. Additionally, the Avon High School staff, I'll speak to that more specifically later as you go through this, but their work, department coordinators especially, in terms of making sure that we have a product that students can, and families can use. Again, as you pointed out, the mission statement, our course of studies is driven by the mission statement, as is all of our work. I guess I don't need to reiterate again, but it's already done. One of our goals for the course of studies this year was to make sure that, you know, reflect accurate information from a logistical side. This aligns with the Avon Public School goals of both achievement and communication. So I annotated some page numbers here just for the references, but under the basics such as the graduation requirements, as passed by the Board of Education, course offerings, the descriptions of those courses, and then what levels they're offering at. There's some logistical procedures in there to kind of act as our guideline for the students who enroll in courses next, for next week, before they start those courses in September or during September, they may need to add or drop a course. There's process in place for that. They may need a level change, we'll do that, we'll inform them for that. But there again, there's a process for that. Several years ago, Chris Crandford introduced contracting honors courses for electives as a way to make sure students who were very concerned about, you know, that level would still be interested in taking courses that, you know, expand their horizons. And then in there, there's also the GPA implications, whether it's an AP, senior course, or it's an honors-level course, or a college-level course. Another goal, more importantly, was the, just as a part of this, communication. Again, this addresses both communication, and I think in this process, the culture aspects of the Avon Public School goals that we have. Really, I was sent out an informational letter to parents that did, you know, outlined, it was time for course studies review, type of course registration, and there was a timeline. That same timeline was shared out to all students as well, so they had some kind of understanding of where we were, what we planned to do, and how we were going about doing it. So there's going to be a few things that weren't necessarily done in at least the recent history that I'm aware of. Amy Rocha, who was the department coordinator for the related arts, unified arts, and other schools, just from a politic, but it's the, pretty much basically the electives, came up with the idea that we hold a gradient elective exploration, like, rather than a bunch of us standing in the auditorium, talking bad people about what we do, why not, you get, he got every one of his teammates, and the other department coordinators to volunteer, another guy in, were to show first, you know, hands-on experiences for students, what electives are offered available to the freshman coming in. Additionally, John Sonardi opened up one of our science labs, so the students can see what the high school science lab looks like compared to some of their experiences in them today. So it's an opportunity for students and families to interact with the teachers, and interact with students who are taking those courses or are currently taking those courses. We have, I think, about 400 people total come through, and it all counts, and just getting feedback from parents who are maybe from Toxic Brook, who are willing to share. It seemed as though it was a success in their eyes. A change we had this year is the, the course of studies was online last year. This year, I, maybe it's a generational thing, but I like to have a paper copy in my hand when I see something I can't. Kids can read off it here, I can't even with my glasses. But I also think it's an opportunity to sit down with a parent, and look over the workbook. We also gave them a worksheet at each grade level, eighth grade up through 11, that we asked them, engagement students during advisory with the workbook, to, so they can start to take some responsibility for their learning. You know, they've got to, they've got to get ahead, how many credits do I have? So we look at the credits, a course, a half-credit, is it full-credit, is it a full and a half-credit? Because it's one of the science of the other courses. And then we also wanted to put down, what do they want to take next year? What course, what level do they want? And it wasn't a requirement, but we were hoping that there'd be a student signature and a parent signature at the bottom. I understand it didn't happen in all families, that's okay. The student's responsibility then was to take this worksheet and would meet with their teacher that's recommending the course for the following year and a level, and have a conversation. So the worksheet, and this came about through conversations with department coordinators, you know, sometimes, you know, you want to, you want students to be challenged, you want them to still be emotionally stable while they're taking all those courses. So the custody kids, you, within a content that you know them in, sometimes you don't have all the information. So when a student brings you up a completed worksheet, what that allows the teacher to do is kind of look at, you know, where's, where's, where's the student tracking, as far as the white, where's the student looking to be in different level courses? So it allowed the teacher to have a more detailed conversation, a more in-depth conversation with the student about, you know, whether they felt they were challenging themselves enough, and that's, I get that from teachers, they describe some of the students weren't challenging themselves enough, and we're recommending something, something a little more challenging for them. Or if it's, you know, custody child who's got everything on, you know, highest possible levels in each of the areas he wants, and you know that it's going to be too much, maybe it's just a conversation, so he has the full picture of what he or she, he has the full picture of what's entailed in that course at the level of power. So then I, I tasked the teachers with making a solid recommendation, I didn't think what's going to be the best measures for that child, and that's what essentially the power school for them. The next step, we had, those conversations were scheduled to take place, and they did. The Wednesday and Thursday after we came back from a four-day weekend, they were stated that they couldn't assign homework or have assessments, meaning there was a board policy. So I needed to push back there. And what I noticed as I walked around is, you know, any number of ways teachers were communicating with students. Some were sitting at their desk, pulling students up while their kids were doing their work, others pulled the desk out into the hallway to have a private conversation. One teacher pulled her desk right into the doorway so that when I walked by, she knew I would see it, and she was aware of what was asked, which, I don't take offense to that. So again, those conversations were taking place. Most of the students were prepared. There were some who were down in the gang's office before the course got, well, say, we need to get a sheet, but Todd had that all squared away, knew that that was going to happen. And so at the end of the, the day Thursday, the teachers were instructed to make sure that they entered those recommendations into Power School, because while they have a worksheet, it's still Power School, where everything is housed. That hasn't changed at all. And so that the students can then go ahead and make their, sign up this week for the courses that are going to be taken. End of the day, is every student and teacher necessarily on the same page, about the same level? Not necessarily. And so there is an override process. I know sometimes that's considered a dirty word, that it's gatekeeping, but override for me really means it's a gateway to communication. With this form that we have, if, one, it's one more way to make sure that the parent, the student, and the teacher are all communicated about what the expectations are. At the end of the day, what comes back in this form is what we go with. You know, we don't want a child, we don't want to make the error of not letting a child take the level of course that they feel, that their parents feel they're ready for. This is merely to make sure that everybody has all the information, okay? And so, and then it also gives us better data moving forward next year when we look back and review this process. And Todd will talk a little bit more about that later. So at the end of the day, the child and the family get the course that they're looking to have at the level of reading.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do we keep track of what the students request versus what the teachers recommend? Do you have some data to look at to see what the numbers of them?
We do have, we almost still have good data right now. The course of studies from last year, the teacher would make, the lady would make sure that the teacher makes a recommendation, if the child wants something different, teacher changes it. There's no conversation with parents necessarily at that time, or within the process, I couldn't identify a real process. Teachers were asked to annotate, that was a student override, in some cases it could say parent override, but not all of the course recommendations necessarily followed that track. So I, because it was, it was, there was no way to control it. This, we have a probability of control. Students can only select the course they've been recommended for, that's all that's open. If they want to go higher, or, you know, level up or level down, it's going to take a parent meanwhile at this time. And so now we're going to have these papers, so we can track and which.
Right, the override. I guess my question, maybe the answer is, is there a way for us to look and say, you know, 95% of students asked for the same class they were recommended for? That's almost curious, if there's a way to know that.
So, yeah, the way that it's, you know, functionally going to happen in Power School is the teachers have put the recommendations into Power School. Once the overrides come in, the counselors are going to enter the override in as a separate line. So last year, what happened is the teachers went in and changed the recommendation. So really, if you were to go back to last year, and both, you really couldn't tell where that happened, but this year, we have a process for that, so we can go over and do the review. That would be part of our, sort of, continual improvement plan for next year, to look and see, you know, how well did they match up? I would say, based on the last two weeks, that, you know, there's a lot of these conversations happening at this point, and I'm interested to see where they find a way. Because I think that is part of this process for students and parents and teachers, and that's what we were hoping for, and that's what we're seeing. So it's, it's really working well, so. All right, thanks.
And then just, again, more communication. Todd sent out an email to all the students. We invited them this week, everyone's due by March 1st. Above is the, it was included in the announcements, open morning announcement, although probably we read about it once, of email all of our announcements to all students, as opposed to the outside, so that, the idea that they need to check the email, the school will be reinforced as part of the announcements, don't forget to check your email. What we found is, colleagues were saying, five minutes of announcements, left in the budget, you know, people absorbed it. So, anyway, just, again, another way to communicate. Then finally, it'll be the, you know, the counselors starting to sit with the student, and the goal is that they're going to sit with every student in terms of, to be able to, you know, course selection, what they've signed up for. And March 27th, March 27th is the career fair day, and so it would be an opportunity, part of that career fair day is, if the counselors time to meet the freshman sophomores, while students are taking the SAT, yeah, okay. And then, so again, some of that, so that process will take place. The override for... The override for is, is that due until May first, because we need the cutoffs, there'll be a lot of conversation between them, between now and then. Our goal is, again, just make sure that there's been conversation, and that, you know, increase, to increase communication in order to do this. And once everything's in place, and then we'll take a look, probably, in time we'll speak to that.
So, as was already stated, I came in November, so it's been four months.
Does it help?
It's been great, yeah. You know, I'm really excited about the opportunity provided to be in Avon, and looking forward to working with you guys and the students and parents and community in the coming years. It's been a busy four months. When I came in, in November, you know, Mike was already deep into this process of revision, he's got the, the big book of stuff here, that was come back from the department coordinators with the Course of Studies, and at that point, you know, in terms of a timeline, from my experience, you're near the end of your Course of Studies in November, hopefully, you know, that's where you've sort of finalized the conversation, so you're getting ready to launch. You've decided on a menu of courses that you're going to be offering that year in the, in the plan, and then you're getting ready to launch out to students and families and teachers. So I think this year, you know, at that point, it looked like they were in pretty good shape for what they had done. But I think moving forward, we're going to do a very reflective process on how this year went, how does the Course of Studies match up with the goals of our students, with their future plans, and to take a look and see, are we missing anything? Is there anything in gaps as we move forward? To that end, we've done benchmarking with various schools, and we're going to also hear back from the department coordinators, and being as closely tied to the course scheduling process, that I'll be, you know, we will work as an administrative team over this, this spring to get ready for next year, so that when we come back to the school year, we've got a good draft going. And I know Mike and I are on the docket for November, present, you know, sort of our plan for what next year's going to look like to you. And so, between now and then, we're going to be very busy in that process. I keep, I like calling it a deep dive, you know, we're really going to dig into the Course of Studies, and really dig down to look at, what is it saying, what does it say about Avon, and what do we offer our students? You know, and we're putting my years of experience to that, so I'm excited to be part of that process moving forward. In terms of the BOE graduation requirements for the future, you know, I've, in my last school, in the last fourteen years, it seems like it's been a continuous conversation at Chicago, and I'm sure here at Avon as well, you know, it seems like the State Department of Education, when they put out their, originally it was like two thousand and fifteen, was the revised credit requirements, and then it just continued to move down, down the years. And it was two thousand and nineteen, and now it's two thousand and twenty-three. So I think, you know, it's going to be important for us to look at, how do we retool or revamp to meet those graduation requirements, if they do come to fruition? Because I do think that's a question now, having lived it for, since two thousand and fifteen, of watching the state sort of, you know, keep pushing these, this new target down, it's going to be a question, but we need to be ready for that, for those next steps.
Again, thank you to everybody that was involved in the process, and how your thoughts or questions through the, or something like this.
Can I just add in a couple of things, so that we're on a level playing field, so to speak? So I think it's important to point out, first of all, thank you, because what they've described tonight as the process, I think, as you know, but to be clear publicly, is different than it has been, and that was in line with what we heard were needs from our students, our parents, from board, and, you know, as we were moving forward, trying to look at ways to meet some of the goals that, that we have spoken about as a board and as a district together. Having clear communication out of the high school around what the course offerings are, having parents more involved in the process, to the extent that, you know, we can make that happen, was definitely one of our goals, so that there were these kinds of conversations. And also, you know, you use the word gatekeeping, we talked a lot about, how do we maintain some kind of process that is helpful to students and parents, so that they understand the differences in the courses and the levels, and they're able to have those conversations at the same time that we give them wings to fly at some points, students, and try to challenge them as much as we can to take that leap of faith and role, and of course, that they think might be above their level, and I think that was our, you know, primary goal, remains, that we try to bring students there. I think you did a good job of that through the process, but also, because I will say, I was here on both of those days that the conversations were happening, I actually happened to hear a lot of them myself, going on between teachers and students, and I had a lot of conversations with individual students. So, kudos to you, because what we had talked to you about doing, I believe you got going, did very quickly, I mean, again, Todd's been here since November, so we're very appreciative, and I want to make sure that you know that before you leave, that this is what you did to address some of what we spoke about this early on. And from the moving forward standpoint, one of the things that we've spoken about is that everything that's in the program of studies, as it currently is, exists, at one time or another, in various pieces, has gone through the board of ed and different committees, whether it's policy, via the Curriculum Professional Development Committee, our CPP Committee has seen some curriculum come through, since that committee has changed, and so, there's nothing that's new here for us to look at as a board or as a district, but that was an important part of what we were talking about also. Well, I shouldn't say that, there are two new pieces, and I know everyone knows this, but for full disclosure publicly, we have a course that we have pending board approval in this program of studies, Chinese Five, which had not been an offering at the high school, it hadn't been a necessary offering, because we hadn't had students move that far in the progression of the language yet. And so, we now have twenty students, if I understand correctly, that need that to finish out their language experience, and so we have that one course that's pending approval, that's about to go through that process, like all others have, but we expect it will move through, and so we can do what we need to for those students. But it's here, so they can at least register for it, and not be nervous that they won't be able to finish out their language requirement, and put it through our normal processes well before the fall. The other piece is that, I want to remind everyone that back in the spring, we looked at how to further collapse some of the leveling, in particular between where it was possible through the early college experience, which we often, you know, use our acronyms, right, and call it ECE, and our advanced placement courses. We worked at that at the high school in the spring, we worked at that in the summer, so that they were not in competition with each other in our, in our core courses, that when you are signing up to take an advanced placement class, if there is the equivalency of an early career class, which is our articulation agreement with UConn for UConn credits, you were able to do both of those at the same time, wherever that was possible. We had, we did all of the courses that we could in the spring and in the summer, and we just finally integrated the chemistry course to be, it's chemistry advanced placement, and it also aligns now with the UConn early career piece. So, I want to point those out, because when you look at the entirety of this program of studies, you won't see any changes, any substantive changes, from last year to this, to this year, except those. And the Chinese Five is still waiting on approval, because the piece didn't need approval, we've just combined them like we did the other courses from a curricular angle. But all of that said, moving forward, as you alluded to, we needed to maintain the status quo of what we're offering right now, there's a lot of considerations, we're talking about staffing, there's, there's many pieces that we have to look at, and we start talking about a change to graduation requirements, for example. That requires more time than the November, you know, when we had a full team here, and moving forward. I would emphasize, and they noticed at the high school, that if we are going to make changes to graduation requirements, we're in front of the curb, not waiting for the state to finally make the decision, all of a sudden it's July first. Because very often, as we know, that's what the state does, they, they continue to kick a can down the road about a requirement and a mandate, and then all of a sudden it's August, and they put a requirement into effect July first. We don't expect that to happen with these graduation requirements at this point, but we would recommend that we look at them in depth as a district and through our board committees, to talk about the possibility of changing them for next year. And Todd, do you want to just speak a little bit to, I think the board is aware, the majority of the board through previous conversations in previous years about this, but what the main changes to those graduation requirements that have been proposed are? I, I know what they are, but I don't want to misspeak, because I know you probably know the better than I.
So I didn't memorize them for tonight, I thought that you'd asked me, but I thought of it on the way in, but they'd be looking for twenty-five credits, so that, that's one of the jumps. Senior capstone has already been a solution, so all the students in the state of Connecticut are supposed to have some type of senior or vision of a graduate experience, so that's already at Avon, it's alive as well. I got to go through my first night of senior capstone presentations, and you guys have done a nice job with that, so congratulations. And I think there's, there's a push in the PE health to, I think it's one and a half, but, yeah.
Yes. So the changes to our program of studies would be the overall credits, because we're at twenty-two right now, correct? And, twenty-two and a half, and the state has been going back and forth with the twenty-five credit requirement. There's also the possibility that instead of the one credit we require right now in wellness or PE and health, that it would be moved to one point five by statute. And there's been talk of others, how many years of math, how many years of social studies, going to a full year of civics instead of a half year, there's been a lot of that kind of discussion, I would say, at the state level. But where we continue to see the focus around is the overall number of credits being increased. So if nothing else, I think that's a conversation we need to have.
And our students are graduating with those credits already, for the most part.
For the most part.
So, you know, I don't think that, that's not a huge push for kids, it's just as long as they know it coming in.
Right.
What they need to complete before they leave.
Thank you, again.
Question, Todd, when we talk about the override, in reply to a quick, I'm not sure understood, how that works? Can you explain it to us in a little more detail?
So we're launching override on Friday. At this point, students will enter the courses that their teachers recommend, and that gives us back the answer to what the teachers will recommend. From there, if they disagree, you know, with the teacher's recommendation, they're, they're going to have a conversation with the teacher about where they're at, where the teacher sees them as a learner, where they see themselves as a learner, and if they don't come to an agreement, then they will complete the form. It may be in this process that they come to an agreement, and I know that that, those conversations have already been going on, because I've had a number of students in my office, and students right down our, our whole aisle that are talking to us about those conversations, and what's happening with their teachers, and where they're at. And in some cases, you know, the teacher does feel they can stretch, and they're going to make that recommendation and support them. Sometimes they feel like they really, you know, are maybe overwhelming themselves. For example, a student may choose to take all AP classes, and really have been at a CP level, that may be more than they can take on and be successful. So really, hopefully, that they're having the introspective look at who they are as a learner, what they're taking on in terms of their overall load of classes, and then having balance. A student could conceivably choose to override and take whatever courses they wanted, within the prerequisites for the courses. You can't jump to an AP course that has prerequisite for math and sequence, but you could do a leveling.
So it's ultimately left up to the student?
It is, ultimately left up to the student and the parent. We want this to be a family conversation.
I understand you want it to be family conversation, but I'm trying to understand where the power lies, and so, suppose there's a difference between the student, the teacher, and the parent, who provides?
So we need the parent's signature, signature on it?
Even if the student is seventeen or eighteen?
Oh, I suppose if they're eighteen, but that, that could be a different conversation, but I would want, hopefully, a sit-down, you know, I would.
I understand what you want, but I'm trying to understand how it's working.
Yeah.
So, and what I'd like you to tell me is, in theory, the student overrides, but apparently that's not the case.
Well, I would hope that the parents, as guardians of the children, still have a voice with their kids, and that they're part of that conversation.
The question is, who makes the decision? So if you're telling me the parent makes the decision, I, I hear you, I have concerns about that, but I'm trying to figure out what it is. So right now, you're telling me it's the parent?
That's my understanding of this.
On that same form, and also, I couldn't see it very well, I thought it said the, the teacher and the counselor also required to initial the form?
Yes, they've been a part of the conversation as well, yes. So if the students are going to come to the counselor for the form, for the initial conversation, then they will go to their teacher to talk about what it is, you know, in terms of where they're at, and where the discrepancy is. Really, that's to clarify what the expectations are for that course, and what that student's going to have to rise to.
Is this similar to what you saw in your previous district or in other districts?
Very much so, yes. This actually is an iteration of my last school, I like this form better, because it was a connotation of Avon's, which was unwieldy, I would say, you know, it was a very, it was cumbersome in some ways, I think, for kids. Tried to streamline it in a way that kids could use it, and then also still reflect some of the pieces that Avon had. And it's also similar, you know, my own children, I have three, two in the, in the high school and one in the middle school, so they have a very similar process. My daughter actually engaged in this process, just the same timeframe, so last week. And then in other schools, with the counselors that I talked to around the state. So this is a very similar process. You know, we really do want kids to be at the center of that conversation, but I would want parents in that conversation as well.
But to be clear, back to use this question, if a student is eighteen, and they are making a change of their own.
Or emancipated.
Or emancipated, that, that, that's the.
They're an adult.
That's the, that's the change we go by.
Yeah.
But if they're under eighteen, and their parents still have legal rights as guardians, they, they would prevail, to answer your question.
I'm not sure that's in accordance with board policy, but we will take a look at that, because I believe we said that there might be a different result, and I'll have to, I'll have to rely on the board policy. So I'm not sure the policy's being implemented for fidelity at this.
From a legal standpoint, that would be the answer that we've got, is what you're saying.
Not sure I agree.
Probably not.
Did you ever see me be shy?
And I would just say, from my reflection, and I, in full disclosure, I have twins that are sixteen, and just look at the DMV, and I got to sign my life away for my kids taking their driver's permit, that's the one. So I still, as a parent, have responsibility, and some hopefully say in their life at this point, I realize when they're eighteen, they get to do what they want, and they're on their own, but at this point, I still have some input into their lives.
How many juniors do we have that are eighteen? Because, how many juniors do we have that are eighteen? Because eighteen-year-olds most likely to be a senior, and then have to schedule them for next year.
Yep.
So we're talking maybe the one child, maybe the one child that's emancipated, though, right?
Yeah, and except I, I think we, I have to double-check to see what the policy is saying, and I think the, the concept was that the student should be able to override. So, but I'm, I'm just raising the question.
But you know, at the same time, a parent calls and complains, right? Administration teachers will listen to the parent saying, I'm sorry, I can't listen to you, I need to only talk to your child.
No, no, no.
It's no difference.
I'm perfectly happy to let them listen, I'm perfectly happy that I'm being in the conversation. The question is, who makes the decision?
Okay.
I, I will just save the record, I really like being part of the decision. I think my family functions best, and we're working together, and signing things together, I think it's a great idea. But I, I respect your concern about the policy, and I think we should revisit it and make sure.
Double-check to make sure.
Double-check, yeah.
Make sure it holds legal muster, too.
Fidelity, although I can say that I'm not sure that I ever signed anything with my mother. Could only imagine.
I can only imagine.
Just one more quick note on policy, and in the conversation, we talked about how we're going to be retooling and revamping the requirements of graduation. I, it came across to me just yesterday, this fifty-one-page document, for the first time, because I don't have a child at the high school anymore, so it was just a little bit frustrating, I don't know if anybody else on the board felt that way, to see this kind of a deal of power. I can see it was a tremendous amount of work, though. But our policy for instruction and basis grading has different language than what's actually listed here in this course, description of course levels, so we need to figure out how to work the clock back.
That's what we spoke about, you're aware of that.
They're, they're, they're false in some, but I think, because you guys are almost at, we've gotten that, in a way, because you're coming in and bringing new knowledge to the district, which is extremely helpful, and we want to keep moving forward. We have to figure out a process where we don't get ahead of ourselves, because whatever our policy is typically is what we're held accountable to, so even with something like the question you just was bringing up, we need to figure out how to make our policies align with what we're sending out in communications, targeting our students. So maybe this, we're trying to help us with.
I want to speak to that.
Working backwards.
For you, because both of you are newer to that role, and I was already asked part of this question offline, and so Dr. Busak and I pulled out the last five years' worth of programs of studies.
And so Dr. Busak and I pulled out the last five years' worth of programs of studies on paper to go through, which thankfully, Tana keeps a lot of.
Paper.
And the short of it is, and I spoke to you about this already, but for the public version of the answer, those pieces of this program of study, they did not change. They have been, they were the template of what had been used for years. And so back to the piece of the accuracy of it, as we found a number of pieces that were inaccurate. For example, the college preparatory level, as you know, was missing completely in explanation from the program studies. They changed that. That one does match exactly what the policy says because we pulled it from there.
Right.
Because we just added that in ourselves and matched it to the policy. Unfortunately, they again have since changed the online version when this came out, but they didn't continue to send out more paper copies as every, you know, piece that we found. So, you know, I don't want you to feel.
But there was an update.
There was an update.
Makes sense.
Yeah, there was an update and.
And that is unfortunately the danger of a print version, is that as you make changes. I have to say that, you know, what I've seen with kids and when they come in with it, sort of like, you know, I've got MyTap and notes and everything. They come in with it in a usable form like that. And I think for a lot of our kids, the tactile version of it is really important. But that is the danger when you have a paper form, is that any changes to it are.
Right. And my point is that whatever goes out to the public in this fashion has to match what our policy is. So as we move forward with some of these changes coming up, we have to figure out a process where we don't put the cart before horse. And we respect Houston's question, too. That's a policy that I don't have in front of me. But we did spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to make it easier for students to access courses that maybe their parents or teachers didn't agree with. And we actually got rid of the use of a form like this not that long ago.
Think we specifically required the deletion of a parent's signature?
We did. It's pretty much my.
I just want to, it used to be that you needed an administrator or a teacher's signature. What they have eliminated here is that it seems to me they put the power in the, in the families' lap solely. We have eliminated, you know, Mrs. Jones saying, "No, Johnny, you're not taking blah, blah, blah." Because if your mother says you're taking whatever this is, that's what you're taking.
So just my reflection on that, the form may have gone away, but the process did not.
Correct.
So it was done in Power School, so there was no real, you know, paper form. But a teacher's recommendation had to be required, and then the teacher would override in Power School, so.
And that's eliminated at this point?
The paper form is.
So the teacher, the teacher recommendation is eliminated?
But that's still there, and that will then be overridden once the student returns it.
Let's be clear, since that was the question, let's be clear one more time. The process had been, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, please. The process had been that the teachers made the recommendation, it was put into Power School, and then students registered, whether or not they had any conversation at home or with anyone else or necessarily with a teacher, who just logged in. Some things were grayed out. They were not necessarily able to register for what they thought they wanted. And they could then have a conversation if they wanted to, but there were more hoops to jump to, so to speak, because they needed the approval of the teacher and the administrator to, in fact, have an override. That's how it had been until, until right now.
Well, yeah. Not the way it was supposed to be.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that it was. I am saying that I heard from the board that we wanted to lessen the gatekeeping that had been going on. And I heard from parents and from students, they wanted to have more choices, too. But from teachers, they still wanted to be part of the conversation. So this process was to lessen the gatekeeping and to allow the students to be able to, in effect, and their parents in the case where they are involved, have more say. Because as Todd and Mike explained, at the end of the day, if I'm recommending you use to take college prep English instead of the AP English that you would like to take, in the end, you're taking the AP, if that's, if that's what you want to do. That's the way this is now set up. That is not the way that it was. They are just looking for a way to have conversation and to, to Jason, Mr. Ndomedeko's point, to track the data so that we can find out how relevant this process is. So they're holding on to these forms for that purpose, too.
And at one point, the form we used to have, I think even required the department coordinator to sign the form, which was not something that students easily had access to. So I just hope the communication is proper to the point where students realize that they have control of making that decision with the parent's signature. It's not a hurdle to get there.
I suppose in terms of data collection, since I think like the data one.
Sorry, I was next, I think.
Yes, you were.
I'll be quick, I only have five questions.
Sure.
So the first one actually follows up on Jason's question, so, and probably what you were thinking to, again, after this one. So what sort of patterns, I can envision a number of different patterns that you were able to track up to the future, two or three or five years from now, based on this form. What are you thinking? What are you envisioning as far as tracking?
Well, you know, I walked in November, some of my students that were on my caseload were still having the conversation about leveling. And, you know, I'm hoping through this process of communication that students really have a better understanding of what it means at the different levels, so they understand that rigor. So as we move forward, we can hopefully, hopefully, reduction in the trend of kids not succeeding in the level that they chose. So they have a better understanding of what it takes to be successful in that level. They have a better understanding of what it takes as a learner in that, look, what does it mean to be an honors level student? What does it mean to be an AP level student? What does it mean that I'm doing that college level work? And, you know, what are those habits that I'm going to have to engage in? And then that would show us hopefully a trend of reduced course level changes in the start of school. That would be the ultimate goal, is that there's a good match with kids in the levels that they're choosing and they've been recommended for, and that they're successful in those levels. That's what we'd hope.
I think one of the things we thought about is the board for a long time is how do we define success? So it may not necessarily be great in terms of being challenged. Maybe a C plus is a way to show success or that's what's good. And also, you know, maybe students evolve, right? So you think what an honors student looks like, well, that person may not be one yet, but maybe in two years, they could be one. The other thing I was thinking, maybe you could look for patterns, could be maybe teachers. Certain teachers may tend to be more conservative than others when they make regulations, so I don't know if that's near.
So I met with the middle school yesterday, you know, and that was definitely one of the conversations that came up that they've already dug into. That would be one of the, I think, for us, looking after the whole process and sort of seeing what those trends look like and who's recommending to where and how does it match up. So I think, you know, that definitely is one of the pieces for the next step data, data.
I was just gonna ask what other data points that you're gonna collect, which is basically what Ogden says. So if I were to come back with you and say, on a chi-square table, my teacher, my override, my students who get Cs or better on the override course, you know, you'll give that to me next year?
I would probably have sent these out.
There'd be a lot of redacting.
There's a lot of.
It doesn't have to be dacked at all.
There's a lot of pieces to that report that you just said. It's definitely conceivable.
No, it's a three-dimensional matrix.
Well, you're right, but data lives in different places in Power School. And so you have to pull it from different places. So yes, it can be done and then it can be compiled and we could disaggregate it from over you.
Okay.
My next question's gonna be a lot about ECE. So for a long time, the board's been working on how to prioritize the parents or how the schools can prioritize the parents. Have you seen changes as far as questions from parents or board members as far as progress or live coverup?
Since I've come to Avon, I've heard that it's a hot topic item. And, you know, it was a hot topic item at my last school. I think it's a hot topic item around the state. Is how do we, you know, help kids access college level curriculum while they're still in high school? So AP and ECE was a key, key part of our program at my last school as well. And, you know, I've seen kids that use AP or ECE equally with success. And I think as we move forward as a school district, and as a high school especially, you know, looking at how that impact is on kids in their next steps. You know, who's getting the credit, who's accessing the credit? How are they using AP? How are they using EC for their next steps? Because for me, it's about the learning that happens here, but also how does it connect to their next steps in life, right? And I think both programs offer great opportunities in different ways for kids as they move forward.
Maybe my question more simple than that.
Okay, sorry.
More in terms of just clarity as far as what it is and how it works. I look on page nine, is that a change from prior documents?
I apologize. I should have pointed that out. That is changed. That is another change to this program of studies. Again, non-substantive, it's just reflective of what we're doing. So remember, we had a committee meeting, I don't know, earlier this year. And one of the things that we did as a school, the high school and curriculum office, was put out that kind of one-page summary back and front, what is advanced placement, what is early college experience, so on. That is that exact language taken from that which we give out to students and parents and, but memorialized in a program of studies.
It looks to me like a good synopsis of the high points of what it is, so.
So the copy of these documents, the three that are simple ones.
I think it's a great, it's really near, because I also have to go search them.
Right.
And I had a couple of middle school parents reach out about that question as well. The high school council are going down on Thursday. They're gonna, they have a soundbite that they're gonna bring to the eighth graders about AP and ECE as well. Because I do think, you know, it's important for our kids, especially the eighth graders and the ninth grader, they can access those programs and it's important for them to know what it is as well.
And I'm gonna applaud the opportunity to provide more choices to our students. I think that board should help do that in coordination with families, so that's, that's a big turn. My question on computer science, it says, it's just for grade eleven and twelve.
There's two computer sciences.
Okay, you want my.
Yeah, so it's in the math section, page eighteen. So the AP computer science A, it seems like it's only available for eleven and twelve graders?
Yeah, that's because it has the math requirement. So if they were to have the math prerequisite as well, then they could access it earlier. But they have to have the prerequisite math, so that goes back to my point before, that Houston, is that, you know, kid can't necessarily just jump into the course unless they have the corresponding coursework.
Sometimes every requisite is allowed concurrently, so if they take it at the same time, they could do it.
Yep.
Can we spell this out in here, just to clarify that?
I don't know that this, I think they're looking for someone to be concurrently enrolled probably in pre-copulissus tric. That would be a nice clarification. And I think those are some of the pieces that will come forward as we do this deep dig and look. Because you're, you guys, the board's already identified a number of things that we need to keep tight on.
And last one is probably the same thing, music, just get to a nice level of detail, is that the science, the honors level sciences, I think only for biology is where it spells out. That honors levels are available, but I'm assuming that's not, only science, but that's available.
So on page twenty.
Also offered, yeah, page twenty-six, sorry.
Page twenty-seven, yep. You have chemistry?
So in parentheses on twenty-six, biology, one parent also offers honor at the honors level. I don't, it doesn't say for the other ones?
Chemistry was, was one of the updates.
Because of the AP and ECE.
Last AP and ECE, chemistry was one class, and chemistry was part of that.
So we do have honors chemistry for this?
Yeah, the live version of the course of studies, again, this was a work that was created just in students' hands. It's live on the school's website, it's the updated version. A change that I had up here before is what went out to all the students and parents.
But to your point, if it's not listed there, then we don't offer honors.
And we also physics do not offer.
No. There's current, currently, there's no curriculum for honors physics. It has not been offered in the past, I don't know, years.
I don't know how long ago it was. The physics was, AP physics was broken off into two sections. AP physics one, which is more, is quite a semester course that is open for a year. And then the AP physics C is the whole world.
Yes, I think, yes. Um, I would just like to say that, like, I take AP physics one. And it's basically, they use like the same curriculum at the honors, but the, like, you can have the option to take it in C. And they put in like a little bit of AP questions in the tests. And you have the choice to take AP, but you don't have to. So if you're an honors student, taking AP physics one isn't too difficult. But they say the last part, like, taking AP physics one isn't like too much different than taking an honors class? So I don't think that, like, adding another honors physics class would be effective.
Addison, thank you for that, because I want, again, you're new to this. Weird when I'm in the room saying, "You're newer at this than I am," but that's the case now. I had some of this conversation, too, trying to understand where the honors physics was missing. And if I remember correctly, it's maybe four or five years ago that college board made a break. It used to just be AP physics. And there was a break made through the college board that it went to AP physics, is it A or one?
It's one now.
And then there's AP physics C. So it's kind of odd because it's one and then C. It's not like one and two.
You had AP physics and then there was electromagnet.
Yeah.
So there used to be two. They combined the other physics into the C.
And so when that change happened from the college board, our science department here, this is prior to all of our time, but this is my understanding. Our science department here went back through what at the time had been the honors physics curriculum. And the honors physics curriculum aligned to when the college board made AP physics one. And so they made a few changes, moved it forward as AP physics one, cut the honors piece to the point, I think Addison was making two. And now there is no honors, it's AP physics one because it matches up to what used to be our honors full year. And AP physics C is a complete standalone because that's a very advanced physics. We don't see as many students take that, I would say, as take AP physics one. Typically, we see students taking that that are going into engineering fields on college, correct?
Can I make a comment about that? I have a few comments, I have, I mean, just five questions. The rest of the panel is subcommittee. It's gonna be great to see this. That's where we're gonna do our deep dive, I think, on things. And I think we have a lot of kind of work to do and things to understand as we do this. You're welcome. We're thrilled to have you here. Thank you for all the work that you've done. I'm really excited. I think we're moving in a different trajectory, in a really positive trajectory, that we're involving, kind of putting the power, you know, back in the hands of the student and maybe the family. I don't know. We'll see where, we'll see what that does. What I hear, this is really not for you, it's really for the public record. What I hear, I have heard this again and again since I've been a board member, that we eliminated honors because we were teaching our honors courses at a college level. And as a parent of some kids who are true honors student, I hope that we can revisit that at some point and really understand the value in that kind of learning and reevaluate maybe what our expectations are and what our. I think the rigor is really important. I would never sit up here and say that we should be less rigorous. But I think we have to be really responsible stewards of the curriculum and the levels that we look for. So I just wanted to say that, because that concerns me. It concerned me very much that we don't have an honors physics, that we don't have an honors. I think there's some math classes that don't provide. You know, if you're an incoming freshman, there isn't always an easy path to becoming an honors student. If you start at a CP level, I'd like to learn more about how that student can get to an honors level, if that's even available, or if they really should be an AP kind of a kid, but it's a concern of mine. The other question I had was, my understanding is that we're no longer, let me back up. I wish that we were listing our classes as CP courses in the book. I don't like that we are putting honors and AP next to classes and not CP next to classes. I think it's, I know that you do not write this book. I want to have respect for the entire student body, and that would include our CP students and students going through those classes. So I would like to see that notation in our student handbook, in our course of studies. I would also like to see that reflected on transcripts. So when a college is looking at a college, you know, transcript from an Avon student, they are looking at a true college preparatory experience and that is an easily conveyed thing. I don't understand why we would not be putting that on the transcript. I don't understand why we would not be putting that on the transcript, we did last year.
That's a question.
That's a question.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, again, years of experience in looking at transcripts, I don't have, all those years, I don't have even a drop in the bucket compared to what college admission officers are looking at. And when I talk with college admission officers, they are experts at being able to read transcripts. They also are experts at looking at a school profile and interpret that transcript quickly. And our school profile clearly delineates that there's CP level courses. So we are normed CP for all of the courses unless they're located in honors, AP, or ECE.
Only as of two days ago, because we hadn't even had that description in our course of studies.
Well, the weighting scale is what they're gonna go back to when they get the weighting scale, so they're gonna look at that and they're gonna see that our course is pretty much up. When they see that, they're gonna be able to read that transcript as CP. It's sort of, it's just, it's a given. When I started looking at Avon transcripts, I immediately interpreted it to CP, and then I could see the honors and AP, ECE.
So what's the downside? If we're gonna label honors and AP courses, what's the catch?
It makes the transcript a lot busier.
By any two letters?
Well, it goes wherever there's those gray points throughout the whole transcript. And I don't think it's an issue for a person. You know, I think the colleges, admission officers are seeing it the way it is, they can see where the kid is stretched. I think the CP is redundant on the transcript, because it's already at CP level.
So last, but we did it, we did it up until last year, and I was not aware of any complaints or concerns, and I guess, I look forward to learning more about it, but my feeling-
We did it again last year, because, I'm not asking, because there may have been schools that have a transcript, and the same for the freshman year, that they see.
It might have been a way to delineate, right, but other districts do add, have the CP designation on their transcripts, so it's, I don't think it's a hard fast rule that it would lay up transcripts too much. We've been doing it that way until this year. So I hope that we can revisit that, and maybe I have more to learn about it, but I look forward to more of that discussion. I would like the transcripts to be as reflective of what the student has achieved as possible.
You know, I do think, yeah, one more point to bring that. I was through the NEAS process at my last school, and then I served on NEAS committees. NEAS, one of NEAS's focuses, the collapsing of levels, so, you know, that has been a reflective trend in a lot of the schools I've seen. Their transcripts, I haven't seen all schools, so I'm sure there's schools out there that still even have three or four levels. Two, three schools ago, I, we had five levels. I don't know that that made sense. Like, they have, you know, level one, two, three, honors and AP, one, two, three, then a level one, we called it, honors and AP. So I think that collapsing of levels has changed transcripts at a lot of schools. And so I think, you know, I do welcome a look at other schools and see what their practices are as well.
Thank you. Hold on, I have, I might have two more short questions. Hold on, hold on.
I was gonna just support your-
Oh, I also wanted to tell you, I also received great feedback about the eighth grade exploration night, that was a big hit, and I really wanted to share my background about that. Okay, I think that's it. I think there are other things that I would like to discuss, and I think our subcommittee would like to be part of the deep dive process that we do when we look at, you know, the vision of our graduates, what they're really taking holistic, meaning what they're achieving here at Van Avon High School, and how that's reflected in the transcripts, so I will save some of that discussion for subcommittee. So thank you.
I just wanted to add, conjectively, that I agree with your point about offering opportunities and choices for our students. So for whatever reason a student may not want to take anything but physics, maybe want the honors physics, maybe sports or something else. And it's just about choice of collapsing levels, I think it's a big sport in the world. Should just be across the board, let's just, just do that. Thank you, Jackie. Thank you.
So first, I just want to thank you both for the presentation. Appreciate the work that you've done in your first year here. And looking at the worksheet, I think, as Mike said, I like the old-school idea of having a piece of paper, because having to get that teacher's signature on the piece of paper may have enabled a better communication, a better conversation with the teacher. I've heard in the classroom, the conversation is happening with every student, even though it may be a disagreement between the teacher and student, most likely where they're going. So I think that was a positive in having that worksheet. I hope, you know, to see it helping and encouraging students to take certain classes. One of the things that, Todd, you may have heard, but everyone else on the board, I think, agrees with this, and some we discussed in the past, is we have some of the top-performing students on SATs, standardized tests, but we have much lower participation in AP classes. And not that everyone should be going to college, but we have, I think, over ninety-five percent of the high school graduates going to college, and everyone- Ninety-seven.
We just looked it up.
Okay, I knew it was over ninety-five, ninety-seven percent. And for those going to college, we know that it's helpful to have taken a college-level course, at least one. Doesn't, you know, whatever your strong, whatever your interest is, at least one. We were close to about forty-something percent in the past. And I know that's changed a little bit with ECE, but still, our AP participation is extremely low. And I've even seen this year how we were offering certain sections of AP classes in previous twelfth-grade levels. And we have less sections this year than we have in previous years. So, given that we now have a new approach to, you know, the worksheet and students taking classes, I would hope at some point you'd come back to us with some data, where we can look at what the participation was in honors and AP and the levels, and how this process may have changed now. So that's numbers I would, you know, hope to have at the end of this year. The other thing I just wanted to ask is, in the presentation, you mentioned something about benchmarking with other schools, and I didn't know what that meant. Can you please explain that?
So I think taking a look at what other schools are offering, really looking at schools that maybe are similar in some ways to AP. And taking a look at their course of studies, for example, looking at how they're processing, you know, the step two, the two thousand twenty-three graduation requirements, maybe course offerings that they have that we might find interesting that would match up with our kids. And then, you know, reaching out to students and the community to see where are we missing, you know, what areas might we look at program improvement or other offerings? And then coming to the board, and I'm gonna bring to the board to talk about how that might work out, as there's schools, the financial component, or rather about adding programs or adjusting. Thank you.
I, first of all, also, I want to commend you for the work that you've done here, both being new. You're not the new, new person anymore. It's a tremendous amount of effort that goes into this, so respect for that. And the description of the ECE, AP, we've been asking for that forever, and you made that very, very clear. If I still had children in the high school, I'd be grateful for that. With respect to the virtual high school, I would like to understand also what kind of budgetary requirements there are for that. There's a huge amount of course offerings. I would like to see some benchmarks on what students are taking within the virtual high school program. If they're doing it for credit or whatever, are we getting the most bang for our buck with that? You know, it would be nice to think that next year we'd be able to add course offerings either through the virtual experience or otherwise, at one point, we'll be able to get some, and I've decided to kind of table them for a while. As a board, we're always looking to offer the most rigorous program, but also the most balanced program for all kinds of drivers. So you really have your work cut out for you, given the budgetary limitations that the state certainly is coming along with, and what's coming ahead. Give you a huge amount of credit for putting this together. Hope that you'll work, again, with all of us, towards putting the next one together as you work for another program that you're putting forward. This is great. Please stop.
Do you, you wanna speak to VHS?
Sure.
So at my last school, much smaller school, we didn't have all the courses we would like. So VHS had become one of the ways that our students could access programming, and, you know, over two hundred courses that are available through VHS. Probably most high schools can offer some other options that we couldn't offer inside the building. So I saw VHS as a way for our kids to access classes, but we didn't offer programs, we didn't offer, and expand, you know, their understanding. Learning also blended environment, because VHS is similar in many ways to at least one course or maybe some courses that kids are gonna take at a higher level. So it's also preparation for learning how to succeed in a blended learning environment. So I have some thoughts about that.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Todd, thank you, Mike, for coming.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
It's good to see how well you're working together as well, so it should make your process easier on putting these in the classroom. So thank you for taking the time tonight.
I just have a comment. I just wanted to say that, like, as a student, I think that this scheduling is such a huge step forward from last year and the year before, I'm a junior, and I, there's so many changes going into senior year, and I was so, everyone's so busy right now. And I think that this system, like, made it a priority for every kid to think about what they're gonna be doing this year. I think I liked having the course studies and being able to read descriptions of all my classes. I didn't do that last year. Talking to my teachers was, I think, so crucial for me, and I, it really helped me to clarify what I'm going to be doing next year. And senior year is still really important. And I feel really good going into next year, whereas last year I was so nervous going into senior year. And the conversations with my teachers are really helpful. They, it shows that they truly cared about what we were gonna do, and they pushed me to do what was interesting to me, not just what I thought I should do. So, thank you. I think that was really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Addison.
Thank you.
Now we'll move right into Addison, yes? So with a student rep report, if you can update us.
If you push your microphone button, we will hear you better.
Oh, okay, oh, yes, thank you. I don't have too much to say. I was gonna talk about the new class registration. I went to a crucifix night a couple weeks ago at our school, and we have a talent show next Friday, March eighth. And it was amazing, and I think that that really showcases, like, the arts program at our school is really great, and the kids are so talented. I'm part of student gov and Avon Club. They're both do community service at their school, and their student gov is having, they just had a homeless shelter trip, and they're having on the Monday, and Avon Club has one coming up. And lots of kids are getting involved, it's been great. And the junior class officers are starting the process of planning prom, and I think our theme this year is gonna be the twenties. And that's all going really well, so.
Thank you, Addison. All right, and our financial corps, Mr. Stapp.
So, a traditional for Avon, the month ending in January, has not- has been relatively unattractive, long months, if you will, but hopefully down very numbers. Our encumbered balance we can use to define, it was five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars or change from the month prior, which is about point nine percent. And just to give you a look back on fiscal year-to-date comparison, last year's same time, last year we were at fourteen point seven three percent encumbered, so pretty substantial difference, we're ten point ninety eight percent January thirty-one. That's good movement, and hopefully this week, we'll be to cut the transportation check, it's a bit behind schedule, so we would like to see that done, and then we'll be ramping up the year, hopefully with forecasts for you.
Thank you. Any questions? Now, committee and Lea's on reports. Curriculum professional practices, Jackie.
I have nothing, wait, I have nothing to report. We do not meet. I do think we, uh, we're meeting in March fifth, actually, at Central Office at eight P M. I think we'll be discussing a lot of, kind of a little bit of what we've been discussing here tonight. I think we're gonna be looking at our role and responsibilities for our school fundamentals, I look forward to learning more about that. Bridgette and I, Matt and I, we have started to discuss what our next agenda is, so we'll see everything on March fifth.
Thank you. Finance, Jackie?
So at our last meeting, the most important things are probably on our agenda, the budget transfers, and then under new business, where we discussed the Avon High School water heater, oil there in tank, and supplemental appropriation there. That was probably the most important we discussed. Our next meeting is gonna be Tuesday, March twelfth at six P M.
Thank you. Negotiations, Jason.
We are not negotiating any contracts, so nothing to report above and beyond that.
Thank you. All right, policy, Laura?
Policy did not meet in February. We will be under old business, asking the board to take a second look at the discipline. At that time, Dr. Carnamal can update us on information she obtained. We will be meeting again on March twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Lea's on reports. So Board Rep to Curriculum Professional Development Council, that meets again this Thursday from eight to three P M. I'm not sure if anyone else has joined me, but I didn't know you'd be able to attend that day. Okay, I don't know. Were you planning at all, Jackie?
No.
Okay, I was planning to be there, so I will see you there. Board Representative to Avon, where to finance, David?
Okay, Board of Finance met last night, and they were reviewing the independent auditor's findings for the previous year, and everything was fine. There were no inconsistencies found, and generally speaking, the reserve funds are still in existence and well-managed and so forth. And that's the end of the good news. On to the bad news. The, because of the grant list declining by approximately two percent, they're, they'll have to increase the mill rate by that corresponding amount to make back the money, the revenues. But in any case, they're really looking at, all things considered, approximately a five percent increase in mill rate because of the increases in the operating budgets and the capital budgets, but the declining mill rate is a, the defining grant list is a part of that. Okay, so that's the bad news. And then moving on to the worst news, that parents that last, a while back, the state had a plan to hold the towns responsible for some of the cost of teacher pensions that were agreed upon by the state, and basically the state set up this agreement, the state was paying for it all. And so now a portion of that is apparently heading our way. Now, the first go at this was eventually abandoned, but now they're back with a watered-down version of it. And to give you some thought here about how little the legislature has figured out what's going to happen, is as I was sitting in the meeting, it was occurring to me what was going to happen. If we were to receive an invoice or be expected to pay some percentage of cost, of course, based on towns' ability to pay, which of course puts us near the top of the list. But then even worse than that, there's apparently some sort of punitive rate by which towns that have above, people earning above-average salaries will be asked to pay even a higher percentage, which is, of course, us again. If and when this bill came through to us, this would ultimately be part of, it would be part of teacher compensation, really. It's subject to collective bargaining and so forth. Now, we just signed, what, a three-year agreement? So we don't have money in our budget. We don't intend to be paying this sort of money, because we thought we knew we agreed to, and now that's not right. If and when this additional expense comes in, it's going to look like, well, it will be, actually, a very much larger increase in the compensation for the teachers in terms of where this is gonna go. So I don't know if the legislature realizes just what's gonna happen when, if they were to send us an invoice for this, because what else can we score it as, other than teacher compensation, because that's what it is?
Can you say that to me, and then I'll answer.
Okay. Well, the pension plan was set up by the state.
So I understand that, if we get a bill, tell me how it relates to the teacher compensation.
Well-
Your conjecture, right?
Well, you could call it my conjecture. Someone else can come up with an alternative conclusion, by all means.
I think the governor's budget proposal was-
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm sure I will be wrong, the towns would pay one-third of the teacher retirement. None. You know, I don't know whether or not- You know, I don't know whether or not that includes the back law that the state hasn't funded, uh, which is approximately overall fifteen percent of the budget. But then, as David says, it may end up being a higher percentage if it's, the town has a higher ability to pay, then maybe a higher percentage again if we pay our teachers well, which we traditionally do in that situation, maybe. Those details, I don't know. But the, um, previous suggestion from Malloy was fifty percent and that provoked a firestorm. So I'm not sure that a third is going to provoke much less of a firestorm.
Right, and whatever that amount is, whenever it comes in, because the, the expense is teacher compensation.
Oh, right.
That you can't call it something else. Uh, and we have X number of dollars in our budget and we agreed with our union that we would give them a certain percentage increase, uh, based on what they're making.
So you're saying we rolled that into the, the number that we're...
The board of bed budget.
The line item for the teachers.
Well, sooner or later, it's going to hit that line item.
That's what you're saying. You're, you're anticipating that we would add that, we would subtract that from the line item that we have, is that for our teaching staff?
Well, it, it, there's ways to look at this. I anticipate that, uh, what the legislature thinks we're going to do is simply write a check and have, uh, requests from our Board of Finance supplemental appropriations to cover it. That's not the only way this could play out, but if, whether it plays out that way or not, uh, when it hits that line item as an expense, someone's going to notice how much that line item went up. And it's going to be a lot more than people were told, a lot more than they were expecting, and they're going to say, oh my God, who in the real world is getting this kind of, uh, increment? And so, we will probably feel pressured to, uh, more so than we would normally. I can see this, uh, colliding in terms of collective bargaining negotiations in the future. It won't be for three years, I think we're set for those three. But, uh, anyway, I don't think this ends well, is, is what I'm saying, is that that extra money is going to have to come from somewhere and wherever it is, it, it's not going to be good. And then lastly, uh, there was additional commentary about the, um, state's efforts to require regionalization and so forth. And, uh, Brandon with his, uh, insights on Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, uh, thought that it was likely that the pension, uh, allocations would probably go through, but that the forced regionalization would be a bloody fight at all levels. So, I, I don't know for sure what the state's really trying to accomplish there, because I'll, I'll say this much, we looked, talked about the, uh, fiscal auditors, independent auditors, review of the town books and so forth. Our budget balances, we have money. The state, in its infinite wisdom, is going to tell us how to be more efficient through regionalization, but the Connecticut State Legislature is the last place on earth I'd be looking for, for advice as to how to run more efficient government services.
I could also point out that if we were paying, um, money for pensions, it would be given to the General Assembly and it would be invested by the Teacher Retirement Board, which sometimes is spending zero percent return. And so I'm not sure if we would want them managing the pensions.
Yeah.
If we're paying for them.
That too. I suppose with each crisis comes opportunity. We might want to have a little chat about the union, about, uh, defined benefit versus defined contribution plans. With all of the chaos that's expected to arise out of this, it might be time to have that discussion.
Yeah, we haven't had that discussion because it's a state, an allocation between the towns and the state.
Right. Yeah, when the state was paying the entire bill, there was no need to have that discussion.
Correct.
But...
Good point.
If it's a thirty...
We have to discuss it with everybody else.
Well, let's say it's a thirty-five percent now. You know that over the next few years, it'll go to a hundred percent.
If they get their nose under the tent.
Oh yeah, once they get their nose under the tent, that's just the way it's going to play out. So, I, it's, you know, they're talking about thirty-five now, but they'll be talking about a hundred in a few years. So anyway, that was everything I had. Sorry. I hope everyone else has better news.
Thank you, David. All right, so our Board Rep to Avon Town Council, Jason, I was wondering if you could also just update us on the turf committee as well.
I'm a little depressed right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
In all seriousness, so there was a town council meeting in January twenty-ninth. Uh, there was some fairly lengthy discussion about, uh, the possibility of adding lights and buffering to the turf field project. The, uh, bottom line there was the town council decided they would add the design and permit for the lights and buffering as an add-on alternative to the project. Uh, the permitting is going before the planning and zoning, I think at their next meeting, which I believe is next week, but not possible. That was the bottom line result of that meeting. The next night, January thirtieth, there was a turf field and, um, track building committee meeting. It was just kind of, uh, to set the schedule and make some choices about aesthetic things, uh, layout of the field, shed colors, things like that. The timeline was discussed, the most significant things I would say for us in terms of timeline. But construction is supposed to begin on April twenty-second. The substantial completion date is August twenty-third and the final completion date is September twenty-first. Our purpose is those are the things we're most...
This year.
This year.
Great.
Go ahead, read them again.
No, I, I, I would then raise the point of the pending bill for the General Assembly to prohibit us from conducting this transaction.
Yeah, I don't know, I think they've come out or not. No, I think they've...
I was going to ask that same question, if that, that's come up.
The cons, the building committee is going to make a recommendation for a contractor on March twentieth, the town council. I would think the contract will be executed by late March, maybe April of the very beginning.
I think you're going to have a problem if you do that before you, you learn what's going to happen on that, because it's not just a prohibition.
Correct, you can't use it.
Buying an artificial field.
You can't use it.
You can't use it.
I think that bill is probably talking about the very house, kind of similar to the competition, to have other budget, but across that bridge, I think.
I'm, I'm scrolling to think of what we said.
Is that going for chrome rubber? I don't think it...
No.
The bill is talking about all of them.
It's not specific. It just says artificial.
So, while he's still for that, do you have a question?
I, I, that was my question, if, if the committee has brought it up. If not, I think it's worth you bringing it up at the next meeting, simply because while that legislation hasn't passed, and I think it is different than the pension discussion, because the pension discussion is something we, there's nothing we can do until that happens. But my concern is that the town is spending all this money on building a turf field and then the state passes a bill saying that we can't use it for athletics, nor can we send our... My understanding was, and you can't send teams to play on any field that's synthetic.
No, you, well, it says you can't, you can't fire you.
Not every board member is aware of this pending rule.
Which is all, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying let's kill the field. That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just asking you to take it back and include it in your conversation with this committee.
The fact that the bill is out there and can be passed.
Sure, I'll think of it. Okay.
I, I think it's technically gone beyond, I don't think it's in the schedule for a hearing.
So they might pass a bill that prevents anybody from playing at...
They haven't, to Laura's point, they haven't defined what an artificial turf, because I think what it does is, it simply left that blank without, it could be a conversation, they could ban just chrome, chrome rubber. Or it could be a different definitions. I don't think that's been defined yet.
Well, currently it says artificial turf.
Right.
I did raise the point to the committee, um, that that is a sanction they should probably consider. But anyway, I can't, I can't find it, but my memory wasn't even set for a hearing. My memory was I submitted testimony for a hearing, it just didn't show up, so I can't be sure if the hearing's ready all the way.
So the next meeting of the building is on March twentieth, so everybody wants to show up and add their, uh, their comments. So you're all, you're all on board.
Thanks.
March twentieth?
I just want to get out the book. What time?
Uh, I think it's either seven or seven thirty, Tom, I'll split it.
Ooh, I can do it.
Uh, and last but not least, the town council budget workshop was this past Saturday and made the executive decision to not have that meeting.
All right, thank you, Jason. Um, Board Rep to Capital Legion Education Council, Jackie.
I was unable to attend their, uh, meeting last week. Their next meeting is March twentieth, I think. Yeah, March twentieth. Uh, if I can attend that. I'm unaware of anything too big. I know that they've been lobbying, uh, the legislature for funding, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. All right, board chair update. I just wanted to share with board, I know it was in notes from, um, Dr. Carnamal as well. Thank you, Addison.
Thank you.
Good night. Um, that I attended the A E F meeting, which is the Avon Education Foundation, so it's, um, it's, it's a process where they've been inviting both Dr. Carnamal and myself to attend, so it's nice to be a part of the conversation. This is an organization that works very hard to raise funds to supplement, um, programs in the buildings that aren't budgeted for by us. We also were able to attend at Thompson Brook. Brendan Lynch received a check, um, so that he can incorporate, um, escape room projects into the learning curriculum. So, they're going to try it out on staff and see if they can, you know, struggle and figure that out and then incorporate it so the whole building will be able to take advantage of the tools in order to get the kids engaged in their learning. So it was, it was really fun.
I held that day.
You're out that day.
Whatever day that is.
You're stuck in the room. So that was, that was really great. And then I just wanted to share that on Sunday, um, Mr. Roshu, our musical director here, had a concert that he invited the Camarada singing group too and it was with six other, um, church choirs. It was beautiful. It was in Meriden. It was wonderful for our students to participate in, but I've got to say, we shined. I mean, they were amazing. We had some soloists and everybody was very, um, and the acoustics were beautiful. So I just think it's wonderful when we can step outside of Avon sometimes and give the kids another experience to engage with different age groups as well, because this ran the gamut. Um, even Mr. Roshu's father was in attendance as a choir singer, so that was pretty neat to see. So I just wanted to share that that was, that was a highlight. Um, and so now, move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Be brief in the essence of time. We've had a lot of sharing tonight. Just go through the necessities, uh, the hiring. Luckily, as, as you know, we now have a full I T department. Let's see, uh, Mr. Lay, Seth Lay, joined us. That was our last technologist specialist. We're very excited about that. We were also able to replace, um, departure of one of our E L L tutors. On to the enrollment. Again, I would say we are, uh, we're down five overall. Um, again, we're pretty static in the enrollment. If you look at the number, it's interesting. It's actually now in February exactly the number we started with in August. We see the fluctuation back and forth with families moving out of town. Uh, I've seen a number of these withdrawals come through and the majority that I have seen have been students moving from here, mostly out of state. Uh, just wanted to point out, send out to all, but we received an update on our N I S C accreditation process. Mr. Rankowitz, one of the first things he had to do as he came in was finish, um, turning in the five-year progress report that was required by N I S C, which the principal of the high school has to be the person that does. Obviously with the help of the staff and so on, but legally, the accreditation process is the, uh, high school principal. And at the, um, last committee meeting for N I S C, um, at the January meeting, they wanted to accept our five-year progress report that was turned in and to continue our school's accreditation, which is what we expected, of course, but are still happy to see. Uh, we had a number of what we don't officially call commendations, because it's not the full-blown N I S C report that decennial, uh, but they did list a number of items that they were pleased to learn of in the five-year report. I'll highlight just a few of them. They can consider commendations at this point. The implementation of our senior capstone project is on the list. Having a formal process for measuring the alignment between the written and the taught curriculum through the K twelve vertical review process, which as you know, we engage in often here through CPDC and, uh, launched a, uh, committee to do just that with our English Language Arts curriculum today in this, in this very room of pre-K twelve represented. The forced curriculum review process, uh, research-based instructional practices in all classrooms, use of informative and summative data to monitor and drive instruction, uh, the time that we pay, uh, learning forward in our collaborative learning teams, we often call it C L Ts for short here. And the establishment of protocols for effectively using that time, just some of the things that I would point out they were happy about. There will be more sections that have to be completed, uh, including, uh, what they call section three to four, which is an unbolted piece of the five-year progress report. And they will also be looking for a report on the implementation of specific and measurable criteria for success, such as school-wide analytic rubrics to define our learning expectations at all grade levels of high school. We are working at that, again, pre-K twelve, so certainly it's already progressing in high school and I expect that not to be an issue, um, and that would be due in two thousand and twenty, so I'm grateful as the high school staff and Dr. Resack for all the help to get that report done. When I started nearly a year ago, I realized that I'm almost at the year mark of about three or four weeks. We were just beginning to try to get that report completed here at the high school and so, um, there was a, a ton of work that had to be done by, um, Mr. Rankowitz and the support from our office. So I'm grateful that we were able to do that with the turnover and staff and to get great work to continue with the accreditation. Any questions about that, about N I S C or the process? Obviously, we can talk about that one in the future when it comes, comes to do again. Just from the strategic plan update perspective, uh, first of all, I think you saw some of that in action tonight through this presentation. Saw pieces that relate to our district plan, our strategic plan, that were reflected in what we did in the course of studies and, um, linking pieces of the goals for that directed to the district improvement plan. We have, of course, continued our work there, um, as the, I sent to the board what you've all already seen, but a recap of what we sent out to the entire district about the board approved plan and we give it to the mission and our expectation that everyone in the district truly engages in that work with us. And, um, as we've been calling, it kind of reimagines our future together as part of that planning process. And we saw great work toward that end, again, in this very room earlier today, talking about, uh, what I consider our district's essential questions in moving this forward. What are we doing well already? What can we do to do better and, uh, what do we need to learn and do to get there? And, um, we're working very hard on the E L A piece of that right now, uh, because it's that point in the cycle when it's time to look at those practices. Similar practices are taking place in math and science and social studies, writing throughout the district, but we have a focus, as you know, as a district goal, uh, in English Language Arts right now, so, um, happy to see that. Progress moving forward. I'll just give you a sneak peek of, we'll be, uh, talking a little bit more about moving some similar work forward from the social, emotional, um, standpoint and looking at what we do there from K to twelve in the district from all facets. Which translates back to our district goals of educating the whole student. It's that little child that is not, is not with me right this morning.
You want me to comment?
No.
Ignore it.
All right, just checking to see if you were listening. So, uh, happy, happy with the progress that we have been making there, our strategic plan update. A couple of pieces I just want to bring out. Uh, we had some discussion at our last board meeting. There were some items that, uh, the board had asked that we looked into. In relation to the discipline policy, because, uh, we talked quite a bit about vaping, if you remember, uh, at the last board meeting, and one of the things that was a question we had was how many incidences that had been logged and consequence to, uh, that we were logging out. And so we pulled those numbers. Obviously, we don't have a full year of numbers at this point, um, but in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eight year, that year is closed off. And I, I should note that these numbers that I'm giving will be very specific to anything related to vaping, because again, the state statute where we have to code that, um, is specific. So while it would fall in an overall drugs, alcohol, tobacco category, we have to specifically code vaping, because it has no doubt about the state has been collecting. So when I give these numbers, I know they're specific to vaping, uh, smoking or, or cigarettes or alcohol. In the current school year, and this is as of, for full disclosure, February nineteenth, because that's the last time I ran the report, so it's not current today, something could happen between then and now. We have had, um, one incense logged with a consequence of vaping at the middle school and we have had nine here at the high school. So that's... What was it last year? Um, for the entirety of last year, it was fourteen at the high school and two in... For the entirety of last year, it was fourteen at the high school, and two at the middle school. Look back at this.
And what were the, when you say there was a consequence, what would the, are these where the SRO has played a role?
No.
Or is this just school discipline?
These are school disciplinary consequences. Some of those, as we discussed in the past, some of those same ones, maybe, maybe they are saying that the SRO may have been involved in, but not online. Some of these were repeat offenses, as we discussed, some, some had other pieces.
Not all mine of these students have received a summons from the Avon PD?
I shouldn't, let's be clear, not nine students, nine instances and consequences, some were So you had asked me to look that up, I wanted to be clear about that. You already made the correction to the filling-in piece, and also, I'll wait until we get to the policy for the discipline, because there's another piece there that I looked into, and I'll wait until we get to that section in general.
So a question of the strategic plan. Thank you very much for sharing the update, and one of the things that we talked about before starting here at high school, that came out was the benchmarking against other schools, to maybe, to do this, do we look beyond our neighboring schools, so we talked about ELAs specifically? As part of that process, are you scanning, are you looking for outliers, if somebody is exceptional with respect to ELA, and can we leverage or use some of that?
Yeah, so one of the things that, for example, today, was the process we engaged in, will continue to be moving forward, is looking at research, most current that we can find that's vetted, you know, we're not just Googling, reading instruction, we're utilizing, you know, journals and so on, looking at practices across the country as part of that research. So no, it is not only, it's, it's a wide breadth. I'll look at.
Anything else? All right, thank you. So consent calendar, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Houston at first, or a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, passes unanimously. Now on to old business, policy 5144, discipline, it's the second read before the board.
So hopefully, everybody had a chance to read the email that was sent by the superintendent providing the update, what should we learn, we should also follow up with the comments now. So to be clear, very simple email, I just wanted to send back out the red line version in case you were looking for it in this packet and didn't see it. We didn't see it because we set the red line out in the previous packet, and it's the one that we discussed, and the version that we are asking, you know, board to consider again tonight is the exact same as the previous version that we discussed in January. The reason for that is, we had two policy committee meetings where we discussed this policy at great length, both times. We made some adjustments to the policy after the first read, mostly non-substantive, I would say, some of them were just edits to the flow of it to make it more clear, but also, we added in what I think at the last board meeting, we were referring to as the disclaimer clause, kind of the notification that you are faced with disciplinary consequences as our policy and our district procedures go, but you can't also attest the fact, you may also be subject to legal consequences when you commit an illegal act on school grounds. It's not a given, depending on what it is, but a felony, it is a given, because that is, that is law, but anything under a felony, again, we're back into discussion, I don't want to upset the apple cart tonight, go too far down this rabbit hole, because we've had so much in this conversation, but that's the graduated response model that the state requires that we engage in with law enforcement. That's what governs our interactions with our SRO primarily, within the building. Outside officers coming in for an issue, they're coming for a specific issue that's, generally speaking, necessary that they're here officially, or emergency situations. So that said, put the disclaimer in, because we thought it'd be a good idea if it was clear to all that that could happen. After I wrote that piece as a result of our policy discussion in the first policy committee meeting, I ran that by board counsel, who said, "Great idea, that's not in our model policy, but it makes sense that you might want to put it out there to people so they know there was that consequence." Might even suggest other districts do that, so that way, I guess, sort of innovated to a certain point with suggesting that back to our own counsel. But at that second meeting, we also added in, at Mr. Putnam Mowery's suggestion, that we add in that clause that your immigration status could potentially be impacted as a result of not the action that we took, but if you were subject to legal action. Remember, we had quite a bit of conversation about that last time. That's also simply from a disclosure standpoint, and Houston brought that to our attention in the second policy committee meeting as a court case that I believe you had been involved in. And so, when we had, we then, as a policy committee, made a determination to move the policy, as you saw it last time, and as it is tonight, forward to the board for a first read. We had quite a bit of discussion about that, and I was asked to seek legal counsel one more time, specifically about the immigration status piece that we had added in, because of the entirety of the policy, that was the one piece the attorneys had not looked at before we sat here that night. You may also remember that two of our board counsel were sitting in the audience that night while we had this discussion, so it was quite easy for me to have that conversation after the fact, and actually, that causes billable hours. I had the conversation on the drive home, when I left the board meeting that night, the attorneys was in the car, I called and said, "You were in the conversation we had in regards to the disclaimer, if you will, around immigration status, that we can't impact the fact that you may be, you're, I should say, we can't, thank you, that your immigration status might be affected." Attorney said, "Well, that's not something we would necessarily recommend in the model policy." Clearly, it wasn't already there, we can see why you might want to put that in as part of the disclaimer, certainly does no harm, you're just notifying people. So, that said, we sent you the policy, having not changed it from the last time we discussed it, because I don't see anything that needs changing based on our conversations and the legal review that we did.
But also, just as a note, we are already adhering to the state statute, even though we cannot vote on this, the district is currently operating by.
There are some pieces of this that, yes, that are new, that we have, of course, we are adhering to, because we wouldn't want to put the district and board in a place of liability.
But the expectation would be that there's enough review at this point that we should be able to vote, if there's any further questions.
I'm happy to move the adoption of the policy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Cardinal.
Thank you, thank you, that'll make it easier. And to be clear, one of the things that we discussed was the dissemination of this policy and any of that in particular, that in regards to students, that we feel the families and students need to see, and that will be a part of the process now that it is approved tonight. I'll make sure that it gets out.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, supplemental appropriation request, Jay has the wording for the water heater boiler tank.
I'll make a motion, but then, in the head of the mind, give in the description. You can go first, I'll make my motion.
Thank you for considering this supplemental appropriation. I just wanted to say this is a great example of the board.
Speak up a little bit further on the left.
The board and the town working together to get the project up, that we've identified as a priority, and it truly is given, I voted up a bit. The high school, as you all know, is designated as a shelter for the town of Avon, and it seems over the last several years, particularly this last 12 months, what we're asking for supplemental for the domestic water heater boiler and tank system, it gets really deteriorated and it's past its life cycle. So this supplemental is asking for access to an existing capital improvement plan account that exists at the town side, that was originally designated several years ago, prior to my tenure, surely, as the AHS H-back boiler. I defined in the second paragraph that that particular unit is identified as having boiler life expectancy, as well as we have a far more solid mitigation plan in place should something catastrophic go wrong with that particular system. So we are asking the board's consideration to move to the town. This request for supplemental, the system is critical, thank you.
So I'll make the motion to approve the request for a supplemental appropriation to fund the Avon High School domestic water heater boiler and tank totaling $211,000. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is AHS field trip for the Class M wrestling championships in Guilford, which already took place.
I'm gonna, it did already take place, but I'm going to ask Ms. Michelle to explain this to you, because that's the office originally, originates in.
I hope, no, the business office has received and reviewed all field trip requests, particularly to make sure that they abide by not only protocols, policy, but insurance standards. This being an overnight field trip, and because of the timing of it, I had to ask the superintendent to exercise her right of the policy to go and approve this, but it's appearing before you as protocol, for the policy to, I'm not sure it's necessary to approve, but it has to go on the next regular schedule for initiation.
Long and short of it, they didn't necessarily know in time for our last board meeting that they would make it to the championships, and need to travel overnight, so it wasn't on the last board agenda, but we weren't going to tell them we couldn't go and compete as a result of that, so I allowed them to go, but full disclosure, as Ms. Michelle had said, policy social improvements, so there it is.
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Hopefully, nobody's opposing.
I think, I think our own premier might be a member of the state championship. Did they win? Are they?
I don't know, he, I'm not sure what happened, because.
I think it was good.
I think they did well.
They did well, but I mean, even tonight, they had something else going on. It is, so.
Thank you for letting me know.
They got third place.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, they had some injuries, so.
They had some injuries, yeah.
And an exciting season.
They did, yeah, it was the first time they made it this far that I remember, I'll go treat stuff today.
Thanks for letting me know.
I'd be happy to approve that they went.
Yes, all right, just that. All right, communication from board members, anything else?
I would like.
Jeff.
Just so board is aware, this Friday, the state is having those public hearings on the regionalization, two bills proposed on regionalization. I was hoping that this board would take up the motion and submit a joint statement like many other boards have had. At this point, I would encourage each member to submit their own testimony. I am submitting my own testimony, I encourage you all to do the same.
What's the bill number? I forgot.
I don't have, the two, they're, they're doing both of them.
I, I sent an email, it's in there.
I think there's a total of three, someone told me there's a third one.
I just think, having local board control has allowed us to design curriculums that meet the individual needs of our students. Every community is different, the state has laid out their expectations for us in terms of generally what we expect all of our students to meet, but students in this community versus the community I teach in and other communities for our state, those students all have their own needs. By going to a regionalized school system, I'm afraid that we're going to lose that ability to deliver those specialized curriculums that the individual students need. We used the example before, 97% of our students go to college, in my school district, we're lucky, if it's 60%, so we have to provide other courses to help our students on their path. I just encourage all of you to reach out as a member of the Board of Education, as a member of the community of Avon, and ask the state legislature not to move forward on these bills.
Jeff, if you're comfortable, if you want to share your testimony with the rest of the board, I'd be interested in reading the voices.
Sure, thank you.
I think it's important to note too, thank you for bringing this up, Jeff, his talking point, I think it's important to note that, to the point that David made earlier, much of this is being considered by way of efficiencies, and yet, there's no actual numbers or ways that it may produce efficiencies associated with it. So, of course, you know, as you talk about apple pie and, you know, motherhood and so on, it'd be great if we could all share all of our services and there'd be some sort of efficiencies realized as a result of that, but there's no plan for what that would truly look like, short of the elimination of, you know, of a few positions and so on from a administrative angle, perhaps, and, you know, I'm not speaking, that self-preservation, because obviously, in a regional school district, you need less super, less superintendents, because, so I'm, I'm not speaking of it from, from that perspective necessarily, I'm saying even, you know, we haven't had any real talk, and I know this is part of the proposal that there's a timeline, but we had no real talk about what it actually looks like. Are we talking about saving money in busing? I doubt it. Are we talking about saving money in teachers? You're still going to have the same number of students, right? So I, I'm just not sure where the efficiencies would come from. And we do hold resources for other districts as it is, we don't need this to be forced to do it.
I have to do it for it. It's an act concerning the creation of regional school districts, I believe it's SB-738, by Cheatersburg, SB 407.
Now, to me, this fits a pattern. I worked for 13 years in the higher education system, and hardly a year went by that the legislature didn't have some sort of initiative to reorganize something in the hopes of achieving savings. For the most part, those initiatives would, once in a while, cut a few positions here and there, but over time, they always grew back to the vengeance, and they just had a larger structure, even more unwieldy, even less responsive, even more expensive than before. And if you look at the headcount that the state has now in higher education administrators, I haven't worked there since 1998, but they have, I think, far more than we had back in those days, to administer roughly the same population of colleges with just a lot more overhead. And so, what typically happens is they run into a series of overlapping problems that happen all the time. For example, at the higher levels of management, at Bridgetts level, and Donna's and Heather's, we've got people under multi-year contracts. You're not going to cut them, you can buy out their contracts, maybe, but what happens inevitably is that this large structure needs extra people, and pretty soon, you've hired back either the people you let go, or you've brought in replacements that cost just as much money as the ones that you saved. So the state has a long history of doing this, and they don't have a track record of success, so I'm skeptical of what they propose now.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or more?
So, do we, I agree with what everyone's saying, do we as a board have a certain responsibility, do we do something, will that backfire politically, what do we as an entity have, whatever you need to do or say?
Do you mean to adopt some kind of language?
To voice, yeah, to voice our, our thoughts and the rationale for what we think and say and we think.
You know, to Jeff's point, we could issue a joint statement as a, as a full board. Jeff, I need to remember the other town that I saw.
There, there, there is Wilton for sure, and there was a second one that recently just disappeared.
Canton is, Canton is looking at it, because Representative Hill was still speaking to me about that. So I can share with the board and.
I would support that.
I like Jeff's idea originally, that we respond as individuals, because then each of, each one of us can evaluate our appetite for risk, how far we want to go, we put our names next to our own comments, and we let it go with that, because it'll take us a while to come up with a joint statement that everyone can agree on, but I already know what I think, I just have to put a town favor in.
Well, we could individually, we could individually reach out, and we could also adopt some language that is unifying and expresses our.
If anyone wants to submit testimony, it has to be done no later than 3:30 on Thursday.
Yeah, I don't think we have enough time to do that. That would just be my guess, I think it's a little tough. Unless the one piece you're drafting could be something clear for us.
I'll be happy to send copies to everybody else, I comment on so much legislation.
Perfect.
So you were going to submit something yourself as it is?
Yes.
Okay, so I wasn't the only, good, there you go.
Were you?
No, no, no.
Is there any, because I know it's a short timey, but you think, you wouldn't care more late to do something as a board, so you said maybe you do want individually, and what for us to? what for us to? Well, I can't speak for the board unless the board passes a resolution and I haven't sat down and reviewed each one. We have to do that for the three separate bills.
And in order for us to pass a resolution, it's kind of a public meeting, so unless we plan to have another meeting between now and Thursday at 3:30.
Well, we could technically amend the agenda, but we're not really ready to go tonight. So I just say, I'll be happy to share what I say. If you want to use any part of it, mazel tov if you don't. Mazel tov and you can do your own. I think 497 says the chief executive officer of the town is supposed to appoint the chair of the board of ed. That's rather sort of short and straightforward saying, no, don't like it, thank you.
So.
Those two are all leaders.
Caps, the Connecticut Association of Primary School Supervisors, which you know we all belong to, and Cade, Association of Boards of Education, are also submitting testimony and they have been setting up times for superintendents and board chairs to be able to testify in person or just be there. I have spoken about that and are looking to attempt to be on the roster to be there right first. So even if we don't get something out there, they have been asking us to come and give our perspective regardless.
It's always good to have written testimony and it's easy now, you just email it in and you go, oh, thank you.
And the more that they get, you know, to the point of sending in the personal, the more that they get makes a difference.
So is that a round that we're missing, but maybe for the next round, we can put something together as a board?
It depends on how this goes.
The way the process normally goes is you have, you have a public hearing, people show up, they testify, people submit written testimony. At some point, the committee gets together and says, shall we vote this bill out of committee? Now, conceivably, they should be looking at their roster of written testimonies that they've had. They're not going to be listening, probably not anyway, going through this three-hour hearing and listening to all the comments on that one particular bill. So they tend to take the bill, put it to all the testimony, and that's why you say quickly on the top whether you support or oppose, then it'll come out or not. If it comes out, then you're in serious trouble. If it doesn't get out by the JF deadline, you're probably okay because I don't think anyone has the political power to strip a bill and put this stuff into it on the floor that wouldn't pally or even. So do we need to prepare now ahead of time for one of those eventualities? I think, I think now is the time to prepare for the hearing. That is the time that's important. I think if you submit written testimony late, okay, it'll be looked at, but I think showing up without written testimony is a sad. I've been doing this since '85.
So you and Jeff are going to share your.
I'm saying my, I will not be able to be in attendance, but I'm going to send.
Share it with us.
I'll be sharing more than half between us.
That would be helpful for, for me to fix you up.
As a board, could we do something late to your point? Oh, yeah, we could, sure. We might have to have a special, we might have to have a special meeting because I don't know what the JF deadline is for getting bills out. I assume it's the education committee, but we can certainly look it up. It will not be 30 days out. It'll probably be sometime in early March, I guess.
By then we also see with Ken and some of our leaders.
So what are your next steps?
Just if you want to craft your own, you can send that in and Houston and Jeff will share.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share as a word document so you can see what I've done and you can use what you want to use. Would you want to use anything? Because you make them completely cookie butter, let's say, and they're all coming off the same template. So put in something your, your own.
I volunteer to be the bad cop.
That's my job.
Oh, no, I think I can one-up you on this.
I like to read those.
I wouldn't normally say that, but I did, this time I have enough to. This is another opportunity. We need to get something special. Meeting or captain, put it as an agenda.
Anybody willing to share?
I'll do the next meeting.
I'll make sure that.
Okay, communication from the public.
I'll put mine on Facebook.
Jeff, would you like to come forth, come on up and tell us your name for the.
Sure, come on up because you're being recorded over there. So you want to make sure that you're close enough that, well, you don't. Just have, see right there, you don't need to turn the microphone around. And tell us who you are.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we hold a moment because there was one more. Communication from board members that we have to.
Yeah, so I just want to, so just the context for this, as a parent who's been attending meetings for years, and saying something in front of the board is sort of a big deal I think for the public and oftentimes you're not sure what effect it has. So I want to acknowledge what we heard earlier from a member of the public and maybe think about how we tackle that because I know it's not a incident that's isolated. I know it happens a lot, so I want us to discuss a little bit about maybe some options to address those types of concerns.
Are you speaking to the concern related to the high school incident, the parent girl? I don't know if this is the time for, you know, to respond to any of that, but.
Well, I, I would normally expect the board chair would ask the superintendent to investigate and take remedial action and the superintendent would then say remedial action has been taken as appropriate and that would be the end of the conversation, unless of course it escalates into some kind of disciplinary process, in which case you have to be advised and then be involved, but I think putting it on your to-do follow-up list, it wouldn't be inappropriate.
I'm sure the superintendent is mindful of that.
Right, I'm sure she'll do that automatically, but in terms of saying what response we're taking, that is a response that we can say is a genuine response. It doesn't overstep our bounds as an appellate body for disciplinary proceedings if it becomes a disciplinary proceeding. So the superintendent would then see if it happened, if it didn't happen, then not much happens, follow up with the parent or have the high school principal follow up with the parent. And then if disciplinary thing has to be taken, then it would be handled in your ordinary course. Right, so I think my perspective, the essence of what I'm trying to say is a little bit different. So I agree with you for the individual incident that, the way you work, all this and follow that, but I'm trying to build deal that with our role as a board and with our mission statement about personal integrity and social responsibility. I know many of us are passionate about creating a healthy environment in our schools that fosters a positive environment for everybody, something that many of us have championed for a long time on the board. So it's broader than that, so that's the con basically which I was referring.
Maybe, maybe you could bring that up, maybe that might be an issue that we could kind of discuss as we look at our school climate responsibilities in our subcommittee because I, I would be concerned about handling that here and now because that feels to me like a, it feels like we're teetering into kind of anecdotal problem. I don't, I don't think this is where the board belongs. I do think we can roll the school climate portion of that in a much broader sense than one person's experience that really is out of our, it feels to me like it's out of our, out of our role or that.
We have to. Agreed with Jeff. Thank you.
We have to allow the administration a chance to investigate this and work out the details of what happened, speak to all parties concerned and determine from there. We're in no position to act on the testimony of one person, but it is good to be alerted to this problem so that we know that there's follow-up required by the administration to determine what, if anything, is done next, but they don't need our pool to do that. I'm hoping that we have existing policies that can be applied to this case and that they're clear enough.
Well, for this case, there are probably hundreds of, you know, throughout the years of different students who have been impacted in different ways by different relationships or different situations and I, I just think we have to be careful when we're speaking about a particular situation. I think it's probably a better role or to be more broad in their scope and their responsibility as it comes to the school climate and what we're trying to do on our time here.
I would imagine if the superintendent came back and said the, the issue was so pervasive that we need to build it into online, not online, but in school instructional training for teachers, especially families, she would do that.
So I would echo that and say that I refrain from commenting at all on what was said here tonight specifically because it was in reference to an individual staff member and even though a person's name wasn't said, it's not, the person's going to know who they were and apparently the administration did also. I was unaware of this situation as far as I know, I don't, based on the burden I heard here tonight, it's not, I haven't heard anything like that. So no, I haven't looked into anything like that. I can't speak to it or not. If the school administrator had, I'll have to have that conversation, but I don't want to comment on it because it is about an individual's employment and that is certainly not something I would comment on in public and not the way of the board. From the climate aspect, yes, we, if indeed that's what it's about, we have a role in making sure that everyone is treated equitably and so, we talk about that continually. So to your point, yes, if there was something I needed to do en masse, that's what I'd do, but to this particular instance, I really shouldn't comment.
So sorry, this is a one-sentence thing. I know people are excited to know where graduation's going to be, period. That's all I wanted to add during comments from, because I, I'm kind of excited too to know how town graduating, but I think the public is starting to get kind of excited to understand that we want to have a TURF project going on and.
Assuming this TURF project still is forward, but at this point, even if it doesn't, because we've already moved forward because we needed to, as you know, we had to find a location for graduation to be held, assuming that we would not have use of our facility. So yes, we are excited that that has moved forward and we're working closely with the programs. All right, thank you. It's, it's that time of night, oh, I can think of right now.
Oh, good, okay, so.
Not, not the, not the correct name.
I didn't know if it was announced yet or if it was.
Yes, no, they have announced it and we have moved forward from the deposit statement and so on, so.
So it's been programs?
Yes, yeah.
All right, we're good with the board.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then allow you to say your name.
Sure, hi, my name is Deborah Stamburgh and I'm an Avon resident for already 10 years. My.
That's not going to help. That's.
That's my.
That's my, that's not.
So I'll speak louder. Thank you.
I can also cheat, get you a microphone over here though.
You wait so patiently, Deb, we have to hear you.
You guys wasted.
I always wanted to be an AV kid. Clearly didn't make it. Sorry. There you go. All right. Clearly I didn't pass third grade AV class.
You wear your pocket protector yet?
Yes. Okay, once again, Deborah Stamburgh, Avon resident for over 18 years. I currently have a son who lives sophomore in Avon High School and I have a daughter who's in fourth grade at Pine Grove and I won't take up much of your time, but I felt this was important and it's one of the reasons why I stayed with the person. So, and it's late, so I'm worried. Okay, so as a parent, I would like to applaud my cause presentation. I think that that communication is really key, especially between parents, teachers, counselors and students, okay? I believe it's so crucial that I actually was carrying around the forms they were talking about. I knew they were speaking, but I didn't realize they'd be showing the forms. And when I raised my hand earlier, I was like, oh, can I just send those forms around so they know what they're talking about? And I knew that wasn't purposeful. But, so these forms that they were talking about really critical. It was helpful for me, it was helpful for my son, it was helpful for teachers and I actually met with counselor Andrew Lillard, Elrod, to discuss what we were going to do for not only junior year, but senior year and possible colleges in the future or a gap year. So it was a really wonderful conversation that would not have been brought in up for now these forms, okay? Another thing I wanted to say is that Todd recently started sending out, this is the first one, is a monthly school counseling newsletter, I'm not aware here.
They sold the last version.
Okay, well, I have that copy as well. I have a binder of my stuff, just keep everything together. I thought this was so thoughtful. I thought it was very, go back, it was exceptional and clear. It did everything it intended, I thought, during the initiating conversations, reviewing the plans, recognizing parts of balance, which I think was so important, this community can be jumped to and above in terms of bounds of what the children are taking regarding CP, AP, honors, et cetera. I also heard tonight that maybe if you wanted a clearer definition of what CP honors and AP courses look like, so that kind of resonated with me. But, so thank you for this, I wanted to thank you for that. So that's why I ran out and told them. One last thing, I want to thank you, Bridget, for having open conversations at the library, for letting parents come out and talk, who may not feel comfortable doing it in an office. I've attended every single one. I feel that I see different faces in different grades, different things. I feel that you listen, I feel that you address questions and concerns and things that you did not know about were going to light up and that was very impressive. I also liked the fact that you made yourself available to all the schools in the classrooms, multicultural fairs, things of that nature and.
That picture will haunt me, I'm told.
I was there an hour after you.
They dressed me up as an Indian princess for anybody who didn't know what happened, yeah. I was kicking and screaming a little bit, but the kids were excited, so.
They loved it. They loved it. So I wanted to thank you. I want to thank everyone who's already on the board, thanks for all the things we're on.
Thank you.
Thank you. So nice to hear you, good thing.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
I was waiting for the shoe to drop, I never did. Thank you for taking the time to do that. That was good.
All right, so we will go into executive session and I am inviting in.
Quick break.
Yeah, quick break beforehand, but I'm, let me just say, inviting in Donna, Nesla Rusak, Heather Mashad and Roberto Medic. So can I have a motion to go into executive session with a slight.
Yeah, maybe.
Oh, of course, our superintendent.
I can go if you want.
Okay, just a second. Second by Jason, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.